Divided it with kids bursting out all over the place. And that's not even counting the kids that are at the time circulating to activities outside. That's just a little bit emblematic of the need for growth and expansion that we've got. I think everybody appreciates that. Now we're beginning to embark on the expansion plans. And with that as well, the fundraising capital campaign that's going to go with it. In a minute, we'll hear from Joe. But first, I'd like to ask Rabbi Fryberg to share the Bar Torah with us.
Thank you, Mark, and thank everyone for joining us. I guess I only have 60 seconds. So we know it's obviously a very easy parsha to do with our Torah about for these purposes. With the parsha starts off, Hashem says to Moshe to tell the whole Jewish people, "Vayku, daber el b'nai israel," tell it's important to note. He says, "Tell the whole Jewish people vaykhu luch vayku li truma." Hard to translate, but something to the extent of take for me a donation, a truma. Meis kol Asher yidvenu libo from everyone as much as they'll, as much as they desire to give. Tikhu et trumati. And the question, take for the truma again. The question is, who are the takers and who are the receivers? And it seems to be a reverse point out by vaykhu li that they accept for me, that the taker is actually the community. The community are the takers and the community are the receivers. It's everyone who's responsible to collect from everyone else. Now, it's not just mishloch, we don't just hand each other five bucks back and forth. The idea is though, that the obligation is not just upon the konyim, not just upon those who are working in the base of Big Dash, not just upon the Lomim to collect, but rather everyone is collecting. And everyone is giving and everyone is involved in the enterprise of growing and building. And then obviously when the parsha goes into many lengthy details or first comments and all many of them, and all the particulars and the small details that take to come up with a big, with a big project. Obviously, we're here tonight to talk about growth, to talk about expansion. And as Mark said, and therefore that has to come from somewhere. And I think that framing it this way, that we're, we're, we're here to give to ourselves. We're here to give to our community. Our community is here to help, to help perceive that everyone is on both sides of the coin. And we're all joined together to both be vaykhu li as a plural, to take and to give. And then hopefully in the end, I will be able to come up with a beautiful magnificent building that will be there for the spiritual needs of the whole community. Thank you for partnering us right now with this thought exercise. And hopefully in the future with, with your time, with your ideas and with your finances to help bring this vision to reality.
Good evening, everyone. This is phase two. I think what's about three weeks ago, we got together and we kind of threw out ideas. I think that's the most important part. I know there's a bunch of interests on different components of the shul. You know, you're both, you're talking to the mikva, you're talking, where should we add? Should we add towards the north end, which is towards the backside of the shul? Should we have part of that addition in that direction? And part of the addition towards Sterling Road? Which is an opportunity for all of you to get a whole different, you know, feeling of how you, you know, you're actually, you face towards the street. Right now, it's an opportunity to make it look nicer, you know what I'm saying? And if that's part of the requirements, we might as well add it to the program, you know what I'm saying? I know that we had a lot of interesting comments, you know what I'm saying? About, you know, what's important to the shul. I'd like to hear further because there were a certain amount of people that were there. Some of them are here today, but not a lot of them that were there in the prior meeting. But maybe we can get a different input from the individuals that are here tonight of what you would like to see. Again, I did meet with the mikva women at one point. We walked to the mikva, what are the options? Are we going to renovate it? Are we going to relocate the mikva as part of the new expansion program? And then therefore giving the women a lot more privacy and a lot more of an entry point where they feel more secure about it during the evening. That was one of the comments that were discussed. Then how big of a social hall? I know we had brought some square footages the last go around and we felt it might not be big enough knowing how incredibly, you know, large to be a massive people that come to shul, which is wonderful to hear and see. So what I'd like to know is, you know, what is the average number that you would like? Because that will introduce to square footage. Normally, we put in about 15, 15 square foot per person. And that will give you the tabulation depending on how many total individuals you want in a social hall. So you want 400 square feet, I mean 400 occupants. You have 400 times your 15 plus then you add the kitchen and the bathrooms and all the other, you know, accessory uses that are needed to make that, that room function. Then we talked about also the sanctuary, you know, what we needed additional, you know, square footage, square footage for the women. Where would the women be? Since we're going to be doing only a one-story addition, women will have to be located somewhere in and around. The men's section would be one side or the other, or to the back, or maybe the front one portion. We'd have to discuss all of that as well. You know, it, it all has to do with what the final number is of attendees. I do have heard that you've got many, many different minyanim during shabbos. And that kind of helps out a little bit where you don't feel that the impact is a strong impact if all of them came to the same location, you know what I'm saying? But that does help as well. Also, you talked about, you know, the, the teens and the children. What do they do during Shabbos? They have their own minions and so forth. What would be the best? Is it flexible to have it where you presently have it on that side of the building? And where you're going to, whether we should have them maybe on the second floor as well on the new addition. So there's also the discussions were brought out about the value of your oak trees. The city of Hollywood has a strong ordinance on trees, especially oaks. The oaks are given a dollar value depending on their health. And it could run into quite a lot of money. It could run anywhere between 70,000 to 150,000 a tree depending on the health and the largeness of the tree. So you have to mitigate it, you have to mitigate the trees. Yeah, it depends on the size and the age. So let's say if you have a tree that's worth 80,000, okay? And it's in the way of the addition, you're going to have to cut it down, mitigate it. You pay the city the 80,000 or part of it could be reduced by putting in X amount of trees with similar caliper around the perimeter. And you still have to pay, but not as much. So I plead that, I mean, you have a lovely, incredible, you know, fauna of all these lush oaks. I mean, just to cut them down, it'll feel like the addition was just done recently without kind of feeling the environment, how it shelters the, you know, the structure with the beautiful trees around. So all of that we're going to have to discuss. So as part of the understanding, you're going to have to then get a, a tree expert, okay? That the city's requiring. And then they will notify everybody how much each tree is valued so that you know if we should rip down these two or three trees in this direction or go in the other direction, okay? As far as the addition.
I'm a little bit more basic. I don't, maybe everyone here else knows about what the basic plan is.
Right.
I, we're getting into trees and I don't know anything about the basic plan.
Correct.
There's, there's going to be an addition where those trees are.
Right.
And what's in that addition? What's going to happen to this?
Right.
This area of the shul? What's the basic plan?
Well, believe it or not, I'm just early into this. I mean, I've been given just, you know, bits and drabs of little things where, what they wanted and where they wanted to go with this. That's why we're here, I mean, to get more of your input so that I could, I know a little bit better. Next go around, I'll actually have some designs with the understanding that you give me some form of a generic info. I want to take it from you, saying.
Joe, do you want me to talk to that?
Yeah, sure, sure, please. Yes.
So in terms of the basic idea, and this is just us coming to Joe and having a conversation where we're talking about the needs as, and trying to be careful not to handcuff him into what modern professionals think, but really what's really willing with it. So I'm concerned the need is there. There's a need for a larger social hall. The social hall is not sufficient anymore mainly at its current size. There's a need and the long, longer social hall would be more efficient space. So that's one big thing that we see as a need. There's also a need for faith for warming and aid. So one of the early concepts here is that you could build a building on the north side where the mikva parking lot is now. And perhaps have social hall and new kitchen on the bottom, connect it to the present buildings by, you could talk about how we can connect it to extend that and so on. And then perhaps on top, build what could be, there's a question whether it could be flex space or more permanent space, but space for additional minyanim or other. If it's flex space, it might be able to be used for things other than additional minyanim. That's, that's kind of the, the very basic. There's a, a big idea that it's important to be able to, one, make this all look consistent and beautify the existing buildings. Although, I mean, look at some of these very, very preliminary plans. There's, there's beauty taken into account there. But Joe's pointed out, we can't have a hodgepodge. It needs to be consistent. So you'd expect beautification throughout. You'd expect being able to connect the current buildings to the new building for flow. That might give us root to be able to have larger events if we have flow from this, which would be the smaller social hall. If you imagine, say a wedding where you could have the tish or the bedekin here, this larger social hall over there, perhaps ceremony here. Lots of different choices, but the idea is to be able to create more functional space and more space for the community to use and a, and a connection and flow and beautification all at the same time. Does that help a little bit?
A little bit.
Okay.
But this, this area here would remain, I guess, it's not going to be an expansion of the main sanctuary or be used for other purpose.
That would be the, the idea. The question that had come up last time is that, well, if we don't have enough women seating, do we build more like Joe's mentioning? We talked about perhaps breaking out that wall and building more seating over there. That becomes very expensive and cumbersome. If there's a way to avoid it, better to do so. You could, like we have on the holidays, put more women seating here because at a time that you know you don't need this as a social hall. So I mean, that's, that's kind of a general answer to that question. But part of the pur- purpose of this meeting is not, there's several things. It's to hear from the community what's important to people. And everybody here probably sees something different in their experience and interaction with the shul. So it's important to hear that. We can't promise being able to accommodate everything. But the more we hear ideas and the more some of those ideas start to be a little bit repetitive, tells us about what some of the needs are. So, you know, and like I said before, we don't want to just tell Joe, hey, build us a box and we'll tell you how to do your job. We're hiring a professional to do a professional job, but looking at the, at the needs that the community has. So if this is a time to speak up, whether you're live in person or on Zoom, speak up, ask questions of Joe and also talk about things that you see as important for the community to deal with as we build and expand. Is it for me or Joe? Joe, you're in charge, so go ahead.
The idea as far as a huge component is a beautiful, nice social hall. People can rent it, it's actually a shul that can make some money, you know. Is the idea to have a standalone building or to be, or, or would it connect to here? I assume it's going to be beautified, it's going to be gorgeous, it's going to be a big appeal for other people to want to rent the space. You know, it's an excellent point. In the last meeting, there were a couple of ideas. They felt maybe that the entire addition should be done on this west end. Because really the street separates the two lots that you really own. And they talked about, you know what, why don't we maximize our construction in this area? Where we are now, both on the north and on the south end of this building. Making it all nice and cohesive. And then on the other side of the street, just treat it as a pure parking lot. You have to remember, we do need parking here. You are going to have social halls, you can have all these functions that you can be renting out. It's either you can have definitely parking and then during those functions you might have that like, you know what I'm saying? To be able to double up, you know what I'm saying? Where you normally couldn't, you know what I'm saying? So whether, so we talked about that. I definitely would feel that all of this should flow with one another, you know what I'm saying? You don't have to go out to come back in, you know, during rains and things like that. So it should all work cohesively. Also, the ideas for the offices were being, they were requesting, maybe we should consider them on the south end, you know, have an entire office entry feature where you know that's where you enter and, and talk to the, the individuals that work at the office. And then the areas of the north, where you have your social hall and then revamp all of these other areas that need a little bit of TLC at the moment, you know what I'm saying? So all of that was being discussed. I mean, at that point, after another one or two of these, at that point, I'm, I'm going to just run ahead and I'll start designing, you know what I'm saying? And then get your input. Did I hear you correctly? Is there something that I missed? Which is really important. You're part of this whole solution and I need your input in order for me to get a better idea of how to complete your, you know, your new shul. So, yeah.
Yeah, so I have, I guess, three questions that I found. Listening to what you're saying about the issues that seem to be, have some level of importance because they're among the first things you said. So one thing is that I thought, I heard you say something about one-story building. And if you could explain that.
Right.
If we can only build out and not up, I think that seems important. The second thing is just getting back to the little detail of the trees. It's not really a detail, or is a, a design option to work around trees? And try to think about building some kind of somewhat greenway and not just go and cut everything down? You know, possibly darn.
Right.
And then the third issue is just, is there any, is there any thoughts, really conceptual thing? But on space that is radically underused or overused depending on the time of day or the time of year. So a minion in a, a space that is sparsely populated versus a minion in a space that is, you know, spilling out the, spilling out the walls. And how does that get managed over time? Because you don't, you don't know how a community will grow. You just know that it's up.
Well, I mean, as far as being, I, I always like to make most of the spaces that are being added to a shul as flexible. I call them, you know, the, you know, a multi-use type of a function for all of the, the individual rooms that I'm adding. And with time, you know, you'll start knowing exactly where those rooms will go towards. Because, you know, you might have more young kids, more teens and so forth. Then you'll start gravitating to those uses. So I mean, I'd like to be able to have a good flow between the spaces that at any time you could just subdivide it and so forth, you know what I'm saying? So that it better meets, meets the needs of not only today, but of the future. And now as far as the green area, let me explain to the city is going to force you, if you're building, it's more than 20,000 square feet. City of Hollywood has now a green building program, which means they will force you to get some sort of a certification if you're 20,000 square foot or more, whether it be LEED or any other type of, of system that will score the, the shul, both, you know, in energy, water, resources and things like that. So as far as from that point of view, yes. And then the trees are just a part, a small component of all of the other things that needed to be done in order to make this a, you know, a green building to some extent, you know what I'm saying? So.
And then the three-story, one-story.
Oh yeah, that's, yeah, now, I've come to the realization now that you have one more shot in getting this last, you know, construction to meet all your needs. It's going to have to be all a two-story. It has to be. There's no other way. You'd need to maximize on your square footage, you know what I'm saying? It'd be very nice to give a change in elevations and in facade. But in reality, I think the shul needs as much square footage as they can get their hands on. And you have limited, you know, land. So it's either here or across the street. And that whole issue about combining the two, it, it can be done, but it's expensive. By relocating this roadway that goes north, south between the, the, the single family home and the trailer that you have across the street and, and the shul. So we could have, we had a layout that we had a re-circumventing this main street to go around to the east of where you have the trailer. You know, it kind of bends around and therefore the two lots that the shul has would become like a campus rather than a street separating it for us all the time. But there is a cost involved. There is underground water sewer and there's other issues that need to be addressed, including that you need to reconnect now to Sterling, which happens to be an F dot roadway to Florida Department of Transportation. So it gets a little bit more complicated. It's just a tad bit more expensive to relocate the roadway. But it definitely is feasible, but it's money that you're not going to see other than the convenience of the conjoining of, of all the lots adjacent to each other.
Just a couple of things. The building's on the set, they don't sewers.
Correct.
They're actually putting up a sewer.
That is correct.
There might be an opportunity if you want. They're not, they're going to open up the streets anyway.
Right.
And anything that's in there can be fully directed. Actually, it might be an opportunity. Question, a couple of questions here. Originally, we discussed, or a long time ago, to make small little apartments or, you know, for Shabbat rentals or anything else. There's no hotels nearby, somebody's a bar mitzvah, to have something that they get with a little kitchenette. You know, they'll eat somewhere else, but have that. We also had years back, like the Neikiv Shnichim, every year, a whole year that you sort of live in a house across the street. That's something they considered. And then last, I guess, is traffic. You talked about, you know, the parking issue of the situation. We're seeing that getting worse. We have a school now. If you come during services and stuff, it actually gets backed up to Sterling Road. At this moment, and we don't have a bar mitzvah or a wedding, where you might get 200 cars all at the same moment. Also, same time on the way out, you have that. So the consideration, you know, is maybe try to keep the traffic off the street. And as B'nai Sefardim or others, where they actually exit out to Sterling Road and keep them off from coming onto the block. Because that actually really creates a real crunch for anybody, anybody that comes in here.
No, we're, we're having, well, I did the B'nai Sefardim addition. I did the social hall. I also did the daily chapel and so forth, added to the main shul. And they were lucky, they just bought, I got them together with the seller. They bought another parcel, just the west, where they could maybe, which is going to lead into all the single family residential neighborhood. It's in it, that area, which is to the west of the, the shul, is, believe it or not, City of Dania. They're located in the city of Hollywood. And then you're going to have a concoction of Miami, Broward also in the middle. So each, you have three different jurisdictions having authority on all of these lots along Sterling and Griffin. So I would say, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of things you've got to think about in order to, you know, to make, make it, make it, make it correct. It has to be really a, a big, big part of it, yes. Yes, okay.
We had a synagogue here the other day. Someone was standing with a gay group and he said, and he made a, an interesting suggestion. I didn't want to tell him it was crazy, but his synagogue actually did it. He says, "How are you going to make one room in a building, make it look consistent? Not like it's a patchwork quilt?" And what they actually did was they knocked the place down and they lived in a tent and had services and kiddished in a tent for about a year. And it was kind of like the attitude was build it and then they come. Once they knocked it all down and they put up a tent, people were much more eager to get involved in the building. So I'm like, is that a completely ridiculous crazy idea?
No, it's not. I really do feel strongly that, I have a feeling, and I could be totally wrong, okay? I have a feeling that the shul wants as much square footage they needed. They're growing at, you know, at the seams. But I hope that the shul is not going to continue doing what they've done all these years in the past, where they just resolve the immediate, you know, problem, the solution. And then it looks like a quilt rather than looking at the overall complex as one unified design. But, you know, that takes money, you know? At what, at what stage would that importance be recognized? You're saying that, you know, we need to make it look really, really pretty. Listen, you guys should be very proud. You have an incredible neighborhood. People are coming here to shul and Shabbos and all the holidays. It's amazing. And you're here, you're so filled with, with individuals that you don't have room to put them. That's great, the situation.
Maybe you as our architect, you're going to have to help them understand and see that dream and not listen to the patchwork quilt concept, but make it a.
Right.
A canvas that is consistent.
Right, right. No, we, we definitely would. And I, I really think it's important, honestly. We, I just can't see just plopping different additions and then the not even, you know, the adjacencies of the spaces are not totally in sync with one another. You have to, it's a major overhaul. I mean, if, if the shul's really willing and ready to do that, I'm ready. But I, but it really, it all takes money and it, and an emphasis that, hey, this is what we want. And ultimately, it's going to be exactly what we're looking for, you know, here. Now, there was one item that was brought up about multi-rooms, people that wanted to stay in the neighborhood. Okay, I, we're, we're going through the same thing. I was requested of me, I'm doing the BRS, the Boca Ritzom synagogue. We're doing the new sanctuary and we're doing a whole new social hall. And we're also working on the Sfardic, you know, you know, shul as well, because that's Sfardic and eschatism. So the rabbi told me, listen, Joe, we have a lot of people who are, let's say they want to, they're visiting, you know, individuals that are sick in the hospital and then they want to be there for Shabbos. And they want to be able to make it as comfortable as possible. So they asked me to do the same thing. So I suggested, in order to be above the line of where the city is looking at it, whether it's legal or not, I would not call it rooms to stay because they're not allowed to have multifamily in this zoning district. So what you would do it is label it as a bride room, a broom's room. You know, the, the wedding party's room with a kitchen in it. And I don't think the city would really know what, you know, what it's all about. But if you put in there, you know, rental tour, they're going to immediately shoot you down because it doesn't allow for that in the zoning. So, so if we want to do something of that, I think I'll help you through it. And hopefully that the city won't have issues with that.
You have a couple of Zoom questions. One is, is a balcony like at B'nai Sefardim an option? And number two is, are vertical structures for parking with a social hall above an option?
Okay, let's take the first question. Let's go. So, well, I mean, are they saying that they, the, see, let me explain to you. If you put the social hall on the second floor, let me talk about logistics, okay? It's great, it's separate, you know? The problem is the schlepping of the food when it's ready to be prepared. I mean, you have the kitchen downstairs, you have the kitchen upstairs. So that's ready to come out, you know, and serve the individuals that are in that room. So all of that we have to discuss, you're saying, because you're going to have a lot better kitchen than you presently have today. We talked about whether it's going to be a warming kitchen. I think that's the direction. We're going to have a lot more appliances, but it was going to be warming. Am I correct? Or they, because they didn't say full. It's open, if it's open, listen, I'm ready. All it is.
I think what was discussed is that we're ready, full needs kitchen.
We can do that.
Warm kitchen for the dairy or bristles and everything. That even in the same building or leave a dairy kitchen here as a warming kitchen.
All it is, is money for the appliances and the equipment, you know? And you're going to have to spend for something like that. It could be anywhere between 180 to 250,000 dollars just in appliances for a full-fledged commercial kitchen, hoods, exhausts, you know? You know, makeup air and things like that. That's what makes a true working kitchen rather than just something that you can put together and it's warming. Warming and a full kitchen is two different things, very, very different concepts. So, yeah, but, yeah, yeah.
Two questions. First of all, I think the acoustics in shul and this is really bad. Hopefully, there'll be something done to improve the acoustics. And of course, take that into account in any new construction.
Right.
To pay more attention to the acoustics.
Yeah, I think a lot of the, the acoustics that are there now are not the best. They're very, a lot of hard surfaces, which doesn't allow for absorbance of the sound. So therefore, you know, rather than, you know, we have hard floors like, you know, wood or whatever, carpet helps a little bit. Heavily fabric seats help, but these are not heavily fabric seats. They're basically stackable. I mean, you do have permanent chairs, if I recall correctly, at shul, which does help. But you need the back wall has to have some softening. It has to be angled so it disperses the sound rather than, you know, kind of just bouncing off. And you really don't get a differentiation of tones, you know, in the sound. So we would have to get a, an acoustician as part of the, the design of the shul and have them study all the components of it, especially the bigger rooms.
Also, is there an option of building above this building?
Oh, definitely, you definitely, okay. So in Florida, you can add anything above an existing structure just as long as the overall height of the addition is not, does not exceed the allowable height restriction. Okay, that's number one. So you can't. Number two, the most important thing is if you put a building over a building, you got to make sure the foundations can handle the addition. So what happens is these were designed, never over-designed. It was designed just to hold itself. So now you're adding a second structure on top of it. So we have to probably pressure route the foundation so they get larger and therefore they can hold the extra weight. That's one option. The other option is that the structure that's being added has its own column system that's actually in alignment with the interior of your perimeter walls. And they hold the weight of the second floor. It does not impose the extra weight on the present foundation. So, yeah, yeah.
From the youth group point of view, they talked about having the multi-purpose rooms upstairs.
Correct.
From an educational point of view, in terms of logistics, I don't know the exact, my wife doesn't say expert. There's a certain age where they need to be on a first floor, not on a second.
Right.
So whatever bench we do, it, it exists, needs to have two floors for the youth as one. Two is right now, as we mentioned earlier, the, the challenge, that's a proper challenge, is our space upstairs where you have multiple, a different room with youth rooms going on. And then at the same time, having dabing going on in a smaller room. And so one of the, I, one of the suggestions I have, possibly having youth in a different area altogether, not affecting any kind of dabing or what goes on, cheer or whatever. So that, you know, nothing, that's no issues there, you know?
I think also very important how they could have.
I think also, very important, how they could have five kids in this whole building and all that, I mean, I think security. I mean, I'm being asked by every shul that they're getting money from the federal government, they got a certain program where they're given, and they have to do it within a certain time limit. Uh, both Safra, I have a, a lot of the Chabad's, uh, I'm working with them in order to make the security a lot stronger. Uh, you know, and they require certain things, you know, certain types of windows, certain types of uh cameras, you know, saying that they would be willing to. You know, absorb, or at least uh pay into that, and the shul paid the remainder. So, uh, why not, if the money's there, you know, I, I would take it. The only issue that will occur, and I would do it anyway, is that whenever you take federal funding, okay? Uh, normally, a synagogue does not, does not have to be in compliance with the uh ADA, American disability, believe it or not. Uh, but if, I would do it anyway, I would make sure that someone is able to get in and out, vertical accessibility challenges are gone. Uh, so to me, whether you take the money from the federal government, I would still make it, uh, you know, accessible. To the people in a wheelchair, or even canes, and things like that, you have to, I, I see no other way.
Fifteen square foot, yeah.
Have you sat down with the, um, how was that, the era, to figure out in terms of the yonah space? In terms of what's going on, this room for a million, you showed, you did that eight fifteen, and eight forty-five, and so on and so forth. So when you're conceptually designing something to put together, how many kids are in these people, and how many kids are here? Then you have that data, and those matrices in order to put this together, I, I mean, this one, I don't even know what my square footage.
Well, I mean, I definitely agree with you, I, I would not start to design unless I get a little bit of a, of a stronger program. You know, exactly what you're looking to accomplish, without that, I think, just designing something without your input, without the shul's input. So I definitely think it's very, very important to give us a, a direction. Now, it's fifteen square foot for an area that's conceding with tables, one five. For an area that sits like you would, like a theater style, like you see in the sanctuary, it's seven square foot per person. Because you need less square footage, with, with a table and chairs, which is what happened in a, you know, in a function, then you need more square footage per individual. In that space.
And to go with compliance, but when you're thinking about designing the, I don't figure out. Space or any yonah space, to make those spaces for the yonah, that are wheelchair or, or can have. Stackable, that, I mean, can give it a, that something can grow up to the state of towers, to, to put that into your consideration.
No, usually, the most difficult challenge that I have is, especially if the shul wants the, the area, the beam on the area, and the arc to be a raised area. So when you go two to three steps up, that means, right there, you have a challenge. How am I getting someone that's being honored, or is asked to open up the arc, and they can't? So normally, when you start doing that, then you have to coordinate a, believe it or not, a ramp. Behind the arc, so that you can come very discreetly behind it, voila, you're, you're there already, up at the raised dais. So I mean, we'd have to work those, if that's important to you, because it was not discussed in the earlier meetings. And not that it's not important, they just said there were so many items to discuss, that never came up, but, but thank you.
Uh, one comment is, um, accessibility, is that it's very important even for the parking area and for the mikvah. So you wanna note that, and then the other question is, approximately, what's the cost difference between doing an addition versus a brand-new construction?
Usually, believe it or not, an addition will cost you, I don't know exactly how much more, but it proportionally will cost you more than a new building. Because you're trying to work in all of the existing restrictions, you know what I'm saying? And connections and ripping out the existing buildings, so that it accommodates the connectivity between the two, usually, it's a little bit more. I, I cannot see doing an addition to any shul in less than at least three hundred dollars a square foot. Okay, because that's the way things cost commercially, and the way materials and everything else is happening today, it's very, it'll come in right there, give or take a higher or a lower.
I've been in the shul since nineteen seventy, now. I've seen a lot of changes change here. Sadly, I've seen a lot of folly put forth, and then compounded. To where we are today, with a woefully inadequate social hall, a woefully inadequate shul. And one little, for instance, Karen Sykes, was nine years old at the time, and you can back me up, Nina. She walked in there during the construction, and said, how come there's no Ezra's Noshim here? I don't know if you remember that or not, okay, nine years old, she asked, we have this tremendous height in here, how come there's no Ezra's Noshim up there? And I begged them at the time, please pour foundations, and they were pouring the slab, I said, pour foundations. Don't wanna do it now, fine, pour the foundations that we can do the structure later on, no, we don't need it. Here we are, hundreds of families later, and for the foreseeable future, gut-willing, this community is gonna continue to grow. I mean, there's over a thousand homes in Emerald Hills, plus, you know, expansion to the north and other directions. This community is gonna continue to grow, and you pointed out, I think, very succinctly, that if we. This is our last grab at the brass, right? Okay, so I think we need to think about either seriously demolishing this building, or gutting this building. And creating a usable space, and we need to think about two stories everywhere possible, possibly even a parking garage. Possible for large functions. The other thing that I wanted to float was the idea of, instead of relocating the road, if we would bridge over the road. In other words, from a second story here, to a second story on that lot. And that would eliminate the cost of moving the road, and still give us that continuity for a campus.
I think we can do that, uh, they've done it in a couple locations in Hollywood, especially on A one A, and a couple of the others, especially on the beach. Uh, the city doesn't love it, because they feel that, they, again, in their mind, they feel like you're owning the street. But, but it's the convenience, I mean, I can't see your kids running back and forth, especially, you're so close to Sterling Road. People turn in and go north so fast, and kids are just running constantly back.
We discussed having this light years ago.
Correct.
There was a discussion floated about putting a bridge, a walkbridge across Sterling. And it was vetoed by the shul because of the cost involved. But the city and FDOT were both amenable, if we would foot the bill, they would let us have a walkbridge. So I can't see why they would prevent us from connecting our campuses here, as long as there's the necessary clearances.
Yeah, yeah, you have fourteen and a half feet for your fire trucks, that's all you need, after that, they can't say no. You know, other than the aesthetics, and how, how it look, uh, the comfort level of someone crossing through that bridge, you're saying, and so, but, yeah.
But I think we need to look at that lot, this lot, and the north lot. As one large campus, even though it's bisected by a road, we need to consider the total package. Because heretofore, it was short-sighted, and it was always, let's look at this corner, let's look at this corner. Let's look at this middle, nobody looked at a global picture, and I really think, when we go to. A design stage, and I've known you a long time, we need to look at the global picture here, and focus on that.
And at this stage, does the money to re-circuit, re-move the roadway, or re- reconfigure it. Is it just as equal to have these bridges and raised areas, and then, you know, even more? So I'm saying, so, I, I mean, you know, you have to kind of look at both options and say, okay, this is important to me. Let's first eliminate one of the two, and then we're not gonna look back, and that's the way we should look at things. You know, look at each study, each of these components, and then after you make your decision, you know, don't look back, I mean, you know, it, it, think of it carefully, you know, say. Cost, time, and all, all the things that come into making a decision-wise, yeah.
That you think about, for example, is about the amount of building, if we, if we expand.
Right.
What would really cost to have the finished product for square foot?
Right.
If we demolished and rebuilt?
The only extra cost, and if you already have all your infrastructure underneath here, we'll have the water, the sewers coming in. Basically, it's the cost of demolition and clearing the site, I'm saying, that's the extra cost in demolishing the whole building. You still have, you know, your water and your sewer coming into the building, uh, you know what I'm saying? I, it would definitely be a little bit more, it would be the, you know, the cost of just removing all the debris and bringing it down all the way through the, to the foundation. Because I don't know how good those foundations are, and I'm gonna be, you know, and again, these were done X amount of years ago. Codes have changed three times, three to four times since this building was built. So, uh, I'd like to be able to, now that we have one shot in, in, in bringing this up to hurricane codes and everything. Uh, I would, you know, I would look at the challenges and, and input all of the, uh, you know, the updates to the code, if the synagogue finds important to them, yeah.
So what do you look at the cost?
The cost. Right, I mean, I would say, I, I mean, I don't have an exact number, and again, three hundred is what's been happening in the last X amount of years. I have not yet, I have not yet built a shul, it's in the process, I have about six or seven shul, and mikvahs and all that. They have not been proven with what the dollar per square footage, at that moment, right now, with all of the, the mishigas that's going on, you know what I'm saying? So, uh, but I think, um, I'm trying to think which would be the best thing for the shul. And the other thing, if there's a cost involved, what would the shul do during the interim? Are they gonna have tents, are they gonna have, where are they gonna dab, during that, there is a cost involved. Like, for example, we're doing, uh, the, uh, the new Chabad in, uh, right across the street from, uh, the Beach Club. I don't know, uh, right in Hallendale, that's the Chabad there, it's on the west side of A one A. Um, we're building a new shul for them, and they're gonna be tearing the building down, in order to build their new shul. So the whole issue is, they're gonna be asking the city, and the city was very open, uh, to build temporary trailers, double or triple widths. I know they're gonna be a little uncomfortable, and they're gonna have to schedule a lot more, but ultimately, they find that that was in their best interest. Because it's, you know, you're, you're, you know, you're crying now, but at the end, you'll be laughing, you know what I'm saying, and that's how they feel, you know what I'm saying? And I think maybe if the shul feels the same way, I'll treat it the same way as some of the other shuls that have done. It's gonna be a little bit of, uh, uncomfort, you know, discomfort, you know, for the first, uh, years, during. Yeah, I can't, I mean, if you want, what I could do, if you want, I could think this thing through, and then maybe write you an email and say, look, from my experience. You know, doing this, and this, and this, uh, I mean, like, for example, to remove a kitchen and put in another kitchen, you're basically. You're not using the kitchen that you're eliminating, uh, I don't, I wouldn't even ask you to use some of those equipment. I would put a whole new set of equipment, you don't want, you know, a, a lifeline of your kitchen to be relying on equipment that's fifteen years old. If, you don't think, that's my feeling about it, but, you know.
I think, Joe, you're looking at excess of the three hundred.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna be more than, that's what things are running now. Oh, yeah, there. Oh, yeah, yeah, we never discussed, FFNE.
Well over.
FFNE stands for finishes, you know, flooring finishes, and, and all those items that make.
When all that has to be factored in, with, with budget, so we know that as far as fundraise, it goes.
And then if you want, you wanna make some nice areas in the shul, not, everything has to be, you know, like, uh, uh, high-end at par, you know? The sanctuary, the arc, you know, it may be the social hall, beautiful ceilings and lighting, that, that's really beautiful. You know, I'm not saying that the rest of the shul is not gonna look pretty, it's just, you know, you're gonna have to see where your, the importance is, and where are your return on your investment.
The office can be in a trail.
In a trail, exactly, that's what I'm talking, Reba's gonna kill me.
So, related to some of the previous comments. Perspective, that there seems to be pretty good security set up here, I mean, I'm sure it always, it's all out, it can be done. But across the street, it's kind of lagging, so I don't know if that can be part of whatever it is that we're planning on doing. Whether or not the expansion is gonna go in that direction, and be inclusive of a better security. Or whether or not that's gonna stay over there, and we're just, you know, I think it needs to be part of what we're thinking about.
I mean, I see the building being, you know, continuous with one another, I mean, listen, you come at the shul, you have a kiddish, I mean. Start going to one building, and then walking across the street, hopefully that you have good weather. I mean, I'd rather, if possible, try to be, you know, within one, one good-sized building, to flow from one to another to another. Not feeling that you're being inconvenienced in any shape, you know, way, shape, or form, so, yeah. Yeah. Sure, sure, okay, um, the women walked me through it, um, they felt. Um, for lack of a better word, needs a little TLC, it's dated, uh, some of the, you know, fixtures. And the toilet and all that, it just, you can see it, it's, it's worn, you know? So the whole issue is, how much will it cost to relocate the mikvah, versus keeping it the way it is, and spending all the money to upgrade it? Okay, within the same footprint, you're saying? Now, I know that the whole issue with the ADA was brought up, uh, that mikvah cannot handle merit, you know, anybody with, with disabilities. So, um, if we can get them in through the door, which we could, then the whole issue is, we need to have the, uh, the actual swing that allows you to. Dip into the mikvah, uh, we've done it in the, uh, the Chabad in, uh, Hallendale Beach, where it, it was the first, uh, you know, ADA. Uh, capable, uh, mikvah were actually a, a, a woman that has some challenges, it was not a challenger. Because we were able to make it right for them, so if you want that, I can make that workable very much, so if, if this particular mikvah was never brought up. But, but we could definitely make it work. Um, I think you need all new finishes, floor tiles, you know, better lighting nowadays, lighting with all of the, the new LED. That can give you great light sources, and point to different things in, in, within the, the space. I think, uh, we really need to look at that as well, I don't know if any, there were any complaints with lighting at all. Because like, for example, if you're gonna be having the new addition to the north of the mikvah, the main door of the mikvah now is, doesn't make sense. Because now the new building is gonna be plastered up against the entry door of the mikvah. So we have two options, either have the addition, uh, on the north end, pull away, and still keep the mikvah entrance where it is. Or where the mikvah had the back door, that it looks like a, a table, a beauty bar, or whatever it was on the way out. Because there was two means of egress, one is on the north wall, and the other one is on the west wall. I would have the women, more privately, possibly, if you wanna keep the mikvah in its own place, enter, women would enter from the west end. You know what I'm saying, that'd be the only entrance, no other, that's problems, because it'd be nice to have a way in and a way out, so one doesn't see each other. But if you can't, we've done it where you can't do it, you know what I'm saying, so we need to discuss all of these, and what's important for the women that use it. If that is important, then we have to look for an alternate option for that second door, you know, into the mikvah. I need a lot of information from all of you, I can help you through the process, but I need for you to tell me what's important. Uh, so, but, uh, but, yeah, I mean, don't you feel that the mikvah needs, it's a little, uh, it's a taging?
I, I have no longer a, a decision.
Right, okay.
But I, but I do care about the women who need, and, and I hear exactly what you're saying, it definitely needs a upgrade.
Right. Kind of have a little bit more of a, a little edgy spy-ish feel, you know, it's not just done hilariously, you know, you wanna feel good about it. I remember when I did the first mikvah in Miami Beach, it was ridiculous, I, I looked at a couple of them that were in existence, they were horrible. They didn't maintain them properly, and said, listen, from this point on, we're gonna be able to be proud, we're gonna be proud of using the mikvah, you know, making it really, really pretty, making it spash, making it. A place to, to go, or, yeah, so, uh, but yeah, I would do the same if they allow me to do that, and keeping the mikvah works, if you would like.
Well, so then, so you're saying that there would be privacy from the parking lot?
Correct.
They would be shielded?
They would be shielded somehow or other, that would be definitely a, a necessity, uh, right now, it's, everybody sees that you're coming out of it. Coming in from the parking lot, it's not even, there's no semi, it doesn't have to be totally private, but semi-private. Semi-private.
So, different ideas, whether you remodel, or. Butt it, or knock it down?
Right.
And that would have to consider rebuilding the mikvah, if you keep it in that location or not, you'd have a one other.
Yeah, the, the mikvah is, uh, it's not a cheap situation, you know, you're talking, it's not only the bathroom. It's not only that, it's also allowing to the range, passively be accepted, and then going down to all of the different, you know, no metal plumbing per se. That's the everything PVC, so the whole thing, it, and then you have the bore under, the bore underneath the ground. One, the Chabad is more, the Chabad board, or boards, one next to each other. It, I can design it any way you want, and I can even do it a combination of both, so that it covers everybody's faces. But that's, that's up to, you know, the. But that's, that's up to, you know, the congregation of how they want that, uh, that mikvah being done, if they want to relocate. If you don't, you have an existing mikvah, just make it pretty.
My question, my question is, I can build everything off the ground, if you actually be practicing.
I know they, no, no, if, if we have to, we have to allow the women to enter privately, maybe the west end, I could do it very nicely. It's not just a, you know, entering from the back of a, of a building, you know, I could maybe put some landscaping, treat it with nice lighting at night so that when they do go. They feel that they're comfortable and yet they get their privacy, I mean, we really need to work out all the details. There's a lot of detail involved in making it work. You know, these are excellent, they really are.
I have a question. Can you give us an idea of where, where we're at in the process as far as, some of your involvement, various, uh, shul projects? I know the one that you're doing in, uh, Palmdale, probably ten hours.
Probably ten hours, Bendy, Bendy, oh, you were there, Bendy and Andy, they were packed, they were packed.
Yes, and they, they have rendering.
Yeah, that was mine, that was.
Uh, yeah. So where are we in the process as far as?
Okay.
So it doesn't sound like there's a concrete idea of whether we're going to tear down the building.
Right.
Is there, uh, where are we at as far as some of the other shuls, do you pick up the same, the animal experience where they decide whether to tear it down?
Uh, yes, like for example, we're doing the Skylake synagogue, we, they bought a lot, they bought a lot of other lots. And they're thinking of ripping it down, okay, and starting from scratch, you know what I'm saying? And then they'd be dubbing for eight months, some sort of a tender trailer. They know they're going to have to sweat before they're able to feel comfortable, you know, in air conditioning in a way, so. Um, so we're still working with them on that, they've given me a list of things that are important for them, they, for them, this farting shul. Smallest farting shul in the, the complex is important to them, uh, they want, I told them they're nuts, but they want six to seven hundred and fifty person, uh, you know, multipurpose. I told them, are you for real? And they said that it's important to them, I'm trying to get them more closer to five hundred, uh, because, I mean, listen, so many, so many. So, uh, so, yeah, I mean, those are the things, I go through the same thing with every shul, they really don't know what they really want. I share with them, these are the options that you've got, when they start realizing, these are the options, they start picking and choosing, well, take one from column A, two from column B, which is important to us. I never thought about that and combine the whole thing into a, a real workable layout, you know what I'm saying?
And so, so basically you're saying the next step is you're going to, some of the ideas that you've been presented with, you want to make two or three options, one of them might include tearing it down, and one of them might include, you know?
But I got to make sure that the shul is really up for that, you know what I'm saying? In other words, it, it's not just a wasted effort, you know what I'm saying? If they really want that, oh my God, we can make this whole thing look beautiful. Uh, financially, I mean, I mean, we were talking, it's better to get a, a program of two or three phases, of X amount of millions of dollars each phase. Rather than say, huh, we have to spend eighteen or twenty million dollars in one shot, at that point, everybody gets nervous, you know what I'm saying? So I don't know if that's the direction you want to take, where you look at this in, in piecemeal, but you're going to get ultimately to the, to the end results because you're going to have a master plan. Or do you just do it in one shot and bear the, bite the bullet, uh, you know, and then wait it two years rather than a year, year and a half, you know, and doing it, uh, in piecemeal? I mean, has anybody thought that? Yeah, yeah.
From my experience, it may be in twenty one years.
Right.
Starting when I was nine.
You're so young.
We tried that piece of the idea, phase one was X, phase two was Y.
Right.
I still have older families that are angry that they're never having that expansion campaign. Because they're still waiting for the expansion of the sanctuary that they're having, because the plans change. I have not seen here a successful phase one, phase two, phase three, because we had the phase one and all of a sudden phase two, it makes people worried. And then it doesn't happen.
Right.
I, I think what I'm hearing from people in the groups that are here and there, what I'm hoping is to say, give me the big picture already and stop with the band-aids. We got a house, it's a band-aid, we got a lodge, it's a band-aid, we got this, it's a band-aid, we're going to expand the existing, but the elevation to the limits, make this lower. Uh, we're doing two band-aids again, I think if you ask the awesomeness need to come with, what can this really look like? And maybe the two choices are, this is the dream, not changing to Southwest Thirty Second Agent. And this is what we can do, leaving Southwest Thirty Third where it is, and this is the choice. But. So it's twenty million, so it's fifteen million.
Right.
But doing it in six and six and six is not up to us.
Right.
It's just not up to us, we're never getting to the next phase.
Yeah, I think the intent is there, Reba, I just think what happens is after you've done and you're happy, somewhat happy with that immediate project. Then all of a sudden, you know, people change, you know, people have direction, not for any reason, the, the intent is there, but, and then all of a sudden, it never happens. That's exactly what you're saying, so you need to have a master, full master plan, an overall, you know, direction. If not, you'll never do this, I mean, you're going to.
Like I said, knocking down seven of the ten different mirrors that have a little.
But they sparred, they did something akin to that.
Yes, they did.
They came up with a master plan.
They did.
They said, okay, we went to spar, the money ran out, come up with more money, guys, the king would thought, you're going to live with conflictors, you're going to live with whatever it is until we raise more money. Magically, more money came forward, and they got to a point where they.
It's amazing, oh yeah, yeah, and now they're going in, they want to build a school, they're not a, a preschool as well as a teens building. I'm doing that for them, they bought that extra property, uh, if you imagine, uh, to the west, the west.
West of Up and Sterling?
Uh, Up and Sterling, it goes from Sterling back north, five hundred feet, maybe more. And then they, they actually are about at least a hundred and thirty feet west of their west property, you're saying? And they, there are some buildings now there, so we're going to take two of the buildings that are there now and use them temporarily. So they can start getting programs together for their kids, so, you know? And then afterwards, they're going to rip the whole thing down and build the, you know, a school and everything else, it's amazing. I mean, the foresight of, of coming up with that is amazing, they at one point weren't even thinking about it, now, they're, they're off the ground and they have, they bought it, they bought that extra person. And they're willing to do it, it always was in their minds and they wanted it to, to come to fruition. And they're doing it, I mean, I don't know how they're paying for it and all that stuff, but, but you have a good group of people that are really want the right things for the shul, very similar to. The individuals that come to this shul, they, they wanted to, to go right.
You keep here as long as.
Oh, I agree, I definitely agree.
That has to be, because up until now, it's always been short sight. And it's like, we was at a band-aid and that's all we got. And we, we shot ourselves in the throat over.
Let me just speak to a little bit of that, where we are now, we have fundraising committee meeting earlier today. And I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that we're at the very beginnings of this expansion conversation, and we're at the very, very beginnings of capital campaign conversation. So I'm sure, uh, there's lots of reasons to say that those things were all mistakes. And it's good to say we would like to be able to do the grandest plan possible that would take care of all these needs and have all the wonderful items that we're talking about. I'm in favor of it, we just have to get practical, also, practical means raising enough money. And Joe just mentioned a number, which when you start doing the math, um, becomes a realistic kind of number. If you're not like going to say, let's spend a million dollars and manage to pull this all off, you're probably having to look at twenty million dollars. And we actually had discussions with some really, really, um, senior fundraising professionals. Who say, don't do this without putting money into the dam at the same time, so let's factor that in so that we're not short sighted. But that means that we have to know that there's a commitment from the community to put up, uh, you know, the majority of the, let's call it twenty million dollars. You know, we can get by probably the, probably fourteen thousand foot building, maybe the five or six million dollar range. But if you want to go for this much, much larger, more comprehensive plan, I think that you'll find the, the board in favor of it. Uh, but what the board's not in favor of is the embrace, so talk to, talk to lots of people around, we need to raise twenty million dollars. So with that, you're giving a little bit of likes there, but just keep that in mind.
If I can respond. Sure, many years ago, I proposed putting an elevated metal building over that back hall. This was long before your time, and it was vetoed because it wasn't fancy enough. I said, we will get, I think it was five thousand feet of usable multipurpose space. Whether we connected it to the shul, however we get it, we maintained parking underneath, we didn't destroy trees, and we had about five thousand feet of usable space, flex space. It could have been used, we didn't need the club any longer, if we had done something like that, but weren't vetoed. For whatever reason, it wasn't fancy enough, they vetoed it. I'm not proposing that we go Taj Mahal. I'm suggesting that we consider, if we can get twenty thousand square feet, let's go for twenty thousand square feet and worry about how we finish it. Down the road in phase two, phase three, phase four, but if we don't go for the twenty thousand feet now, we've missed our chance and we probably never have it again. And this community will continue to grow and we will be outgrown once again in very short order. When this building was finished, Rabbi Davis had a bar mitzvah for his son Donna here. We couldn't fit everybody in this room at the bar mitzvah, there wasn't room for a dance floor, okay? And that was way back when, before we were anywhere near as big as we are. So what I'm suggesting is that we look at maximizing our, whatever dollars we can come up with, maximize the space now. Worrying about the finishes as phase two, phase three, whatever, that's a good point for discussion.
I'm, I'm not arguing with your point that we want to look at the maximum. Even if it's not as fancy as possible, there's a question about how beautiful the shul needs to be, I'm not, not arguing with the point, all I'm doing is I'm just raising the reality and the challenge. Like, we've got to be ready to figure out how to raise the money, so if, and.
Agreed.
You know, maybe, maybe partly to your point, the community is so much larger. If we can all get in the mindset that we all have to step up and get behind this to the best of our abilities. And it's not just, you know, your job or his job or somebody else's job, that's all of our jobs. Um, you know, because it's very easy, we, we all have some kind of ability to hold ourselves aside from the group and criticize the group. We can't get it done like that, we have to decide that we're in the group and that we're going to be a part and then figure out, you know, how much money we need, where they can have.
That's a major challenge, because we have people, and without picking on them, that are snowbirds, for instance, to say, I built the shul up north, I contributed, I built the school up north, I built the mikvah up north. I'm happy to give you something for some membership here, but I'm only here a few months out of the year, why should I contribute here? That's the mentality you're going to have to fight against, and in addition.
Well, then, I, my, my point to all of us is, let's be, let's be careful about the negativity, let's figure out what we need to do to use positivity. And encourage each other, uh, to, you know, to get behind it and see what we think will do.
And Lee, you're also speaking to a much smaller contingent than you realize, I could deal with the membership. Where six, six hundred and seventy plus male units, there's a very small percentage of snowbirds today. They come and go, but that's not what's made it a hard membership, and I think that when you push membership and there's money here. We need to create a desire, we need to create the partnership, we need to create a buy-in, I hope it's the money per se, but exactly, we'll be seeing forty-three snowbirds. If that's not our issue, like we can see, getting the excitement and like Mark said, getting the, the buy-in, getting people involved, getting people, you know, interested in the project. I don't think that it's going to be that, that difficult once we get.
Right, I hope you're correct, I really do.
Yeah, and you have certain individuals that want to donate, uh, to certain rooms, you know, or certain areas. Um, I've always worked, uh, you know, for the rabbi, and the committee to have special rendering, you know, of those areas. So that someone that's willing to put in X amount of dollars, it's a donation, that they get a better picture of what they're going to be actually putting their money towards. And we've, we've done that for BRS, must have done twenty renderings, you know, they, they said, Joe, we'll pay you to do twenty renderings. Someone is do, you know, actually donating for this, so give the, the entrance when it's donating inside the, the sanctuary, the mikvah, it's amazing. And so what we did is we, we gave a pictorial, really, really close pictorial of what we felt was going to look like. Now, of course, we needed the input, uh, of an interior designer at the time, so that, you know, a pretty rendering, it's not just a pretty rendering. You need to be able to have some selections of some lighting, and some just generic finishes, uh, so that it looks a lot better to the eye when someone sees a rendering finished product. So, yeah, I mean, I'd be willing to help you i- in order to, like I said, to, to raise the money. People will give money to what they understand and what they see, but they don't understand it, but they can't read plans, it means nothing to them. What's important to them is just make them look at it and understand every bit of how the shul's going to work. And that's easily done through graphics and renderings and things like that, if you really, the shul really wants to get everybody involved and get them all excited about giving, uh, it's a wonderful new structure. So, uh, yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll work with, with the shul any which way that they provide.
So, thank you very much.
Yeah, no, no, thank you.
Thank you to everybody for coming.